Goals, we're talking wins, yes, we're talking scores conceding none, we know no defeat. We never split, yeah, we never quit eagle like vision, we never squint focus on the mission, we can never miss.
Bow, bow, we're breaking bounds, we're soaring highs beyond the skylight. Bow, bow, we're breaking bounds, we're soaring highs beyond the skylight. Beyond the skylight. Beyond the skylight.
Beyond the skies, you and I, we're breaking bounds, breaking bounds.
Beyond the skies, you and I, we're breaking bounds on bow, bow.
Hello, everyone. And thank you so much for joining us today for this webinar on remote work. My name is Melvin Muna, I am from Kenya and I will be your host for today. So today we are launching first four of our remote work workshop webinar. And this series is dedicated to helping you, the participants acquire a skill, an in-demand skill that you can offer remotely. I will be your host for throughout this session and I'm passionate about remote work and I'm looking to use this opportunity to train other young people and empower them with the skills they need to succeed remotely. So if you've been with us previously, we've done first one, we've done first two, first three and first four. We introduced what was remote work, what it entails, its benefits, its advantages over the traditional style of work. And to first two, we looked at how to apply for this position, the the things you need to apply for remote job, we covered that, you need a CV, a cover letter, a LinkedIn profile, we covered that. And the three we brought, we brought you panelists who will share their experience in remote work. We had from a remote worker, an experienced remote worker, we had from a Mastercard Foundation alumni who have worked remotely. We also had from an experienced employer who has managed, hired and managed remote talent. So today's session is, this first, first four is about a company with an in-demand skill that you can learn easily and offer that skill remotely so that you can earn an income, so that you can build yourself as an individual, gain skills and develop as an individual. So I'd like to welcome all of you to today's session. We have a PowerPoint session for you, it will be interactive. And for first four, we are going above and beyond to ensure we give you a great experience. It will not just end at this webinar, I've created some assignment for you to take away so that you can internalize the concept that we will learn here today. So stick a lot to the end and and you will gain all of that. Also, before I continue, I just wanted to inform everyone who's listening that we have live French interpretation for you. So if you are not comfortable in English, if your English is not your first language, that you're comfortable in French, we have live French interpretation for you. So click on the globe icon on your, on your, on your, on your screen, the globe icon written interpretation. And if you want to listen to this event in French, you can select French. And if you're comfortable in English, you can stay in the main channel and you will continue in English. So thank you everyone for joining. Without further ado, allow me to share my screen so that we can begin today's session. Please let me know if you can see my screen so that I can continue. Can you also my screen? Okay, I'll assume, yeah, thank you for the confirmation. So let me continue. So today you're going to learn what it takes to become a competent social media manager, what it takes to become a social media marketing professional. And why is this skill important? So I'll ask you a question and I'm, I'm watching for your answers in the chat. When you need to contact a brand, when you need help from a, from an organization, where do you reach them at first? Do you, do you find a phone number and call them? Do you find their email and contact them? Or do you reach out to them on social media and send a DM or chat them in, in a post? So how do you reach out to organizations, companies online when you need help? And I'm on chat, I'm here, I'm seeing, I'm watching out for your answer. So please use the chat and tell me how you contact an organization if you need help. Still nothing in the chat, so. Okay, so Fred is saying the look for a number online. Karim is saying by writing a letter. Anyone else looking for their email? Ishimwe is saying looking for their email. Anyone else who wants to share and participate? Take the social media handle, Ruth is saying take the social media handle. So I'll, I'll, I'll work with what I have right now. So what you'll realize is that the options that people have shared, the easiest of them is social, reaching out to a brand on social media. When you have a challenge, when you need help, when you need to buy a product from a brand, you go to their social media, you need to buy something, you need help with something. The first thing, the first place you go is and you can check, check them out on social media. This means that the brands need to have someone who, who is monitoring their social media channels. They need someone to be on the lookout for, for concerns that people will raise on social media. They need to look, someone to be on the lookout for someone to answer and respond to the end because it's so frustrating when you reach out to a brand online and they don't respond to you or they take forever to do so. So most people actually engage brands on social media. Because if say you're going to write an email, you, you it takes a lot of time, first of all, just find their email and to get a response back. Because sometimes that brand can email you back and that email can land in the spam folder so they not actually help you. So customer support is moving on, is moving on social media. Brands, when they need something to pass information, the first place they do it is social media, they don't even do press releases anymore like it used to be. They first go on social media, they give that update because they know social media information travels fast. So mastering the art of social media management puts you in a position whereby you can approach a brand and tell them, I can work for you as a social media manager. I can watch over your channels. If someone asks something, I'll be there to respond to this query. If someone wants help with a product that they've bought from this brand, I will be the person responding to them. It's very important because right now I've done a lot of digital marketing and one of the things that customers want right now is instant responses. If I, if I reach out to a brown, to a brand on social media, I want them to reply to me if possible within the next five minutes. I don't want them to give me that response tomorrow because my interest tool, they already have moved from that point. So this is a skill, this is a skill that you can monetize. Brands are moving customer support online. Brands are now releasing information online specifically through social media because it's fast. So by learning how to become a social media manager, you can pitch your skills to organizations all over the world and tell them, I'll manage their brands for you and you'll pay me for that type. So this is what we'll cover today. First of all, you learn who is a remote social media manager. You'll learn the essential skill for remote social media management, what do you need to succeed as a social media manager? You'll also learn the tools that you need for effective social media management. And also you'll learn how to find a job as a social media manager. And luckily you have a Q and A where you get to ask questions and I'll respond to them. So let's get into it. And yeah, so my name is Melvin Muna, as I said, I'm passionate about remote work, I'm passionate about Africa and I'm looking to share my skills to empower as many people to work remotely. I can say that I have never, the only time I worked in a traditional role is when I was in my internship for about six months and that was it. I've never worked in any other kind of setting. And I'm doing well where, I'm doing well as it is. I live in one of the best estates in my area, actually I could call it the best. So I'm doing well for myself and because I'm leveraging my skills remotely and I want you to learn this skill as well. So let's get into business. So who is a remote social media manager? Who is a social media manager? A social media manager, a remote one, is one who offers social media management services to individuals, corporations, even politicians, I forgot to add politicians, on a flexible and project and on a flexible project-based contractual or full-time basis. So a company wants to, I don't think there is a company right now that wants to grow and is not on social media. It's impossible, even our politicians, they need to engage with their young people, they need to share their agendas with people online. Their first point of contact is social media. Right now, the news moves fast on social media than it does through traditional media. So by the time it's, it's time for 7:00 PM, 7 o'clock news or the 9 o'clock prime time news, you've probably consumed all the information that you need to to consume that. So news is never, it's not a priority anymore. So people are moving to social media, even the, the, the people who didn't even appreciate social media. Our, I can say our fathers, our parents, people, the older generation who feel social media is a nuisance, they are now on social media, they are now on TikTok. They are making skits, they are making videos and sharing them. So these people, they, they, they believe, they understand the role that social media plays in the, in the world right now. So they are also looking to, to tap into the power of social media to grow their audiences. They are looking to connect with people through social. So you can find that someone is campaigning for a position, but they still need someone to manage their accounts. They still need someone to create content for them. They still need someone to respond to people when they reach out to them on social media. Okay? So someone says that when you need help from a brand, you write a letter, it will take you ages for you to get a reply. But if you DM, send a DM to the brand that you are looking to get help from or get assistance from or get information from it, it's, it's almost instant because they have someone managing their social media account. So there is, there is, there's an opportunity for you to offer these services and build a career out of it. Okay? So the primary responsibility of a social media manager is to create, curate and publish content that engages and grows the client audience on various social media platforms. Okay? Like Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, LinkedIn, TikTok. Okay, so and social media is not going anywhere. It's only about, in fact, it's growing, developing. So people, organizations need someone to manage their social media accounts. If you want to learn something about the UN, what the UN is doing right now, you will not go to the website. The first point of course, contact will most likely be social media if you want to learn more about a brand. Because one, we are, we are browsing almost every other time. So brands are looking to connect with you at that moment. Because for you to access a brand's website, you have to go to search, you have to key in the keywords and everything and find them. But when you're scrolling, the code that can find you. So they want someone, they want someone to manage their account, they want someone to create content for them. They want someone to be on the lookout for DMs and queries and concerns. Okay, because right now you are aware of something called the cancel, cancel culture, it's big in the US. So when some, someone or an organization does something bad, all of a sudden people are canceling that brand on social media, the brand is losing followers, losing sales. So they need someone to look, to be on the watch out for negative comments, negative concerns about the organization and respond to them quickly and instantly. So if you really didn't think that managing a social media account is a job, it's a big job. It's a big job, very important role that you, you, if you, if you're good at it, you can get opportunities to to grow yourself. So the primary role is to create content. But I'll let everyone tell you that while you to create content, it's such a strategy. Okay, so let's look at the key responsibilities of a social media manager. The key responsibilities, one is strategy development. Before you create content, you first of all need to start with a strategy. So we are looking to, a brand probably is looking to connect to the young, younger audience, the Gen Z's. So you start with a strategy. So what strategy? We create a strategy to create appealing content for Gen Z's and this younger generation so that they can follow our brand, so that they can buy our products, so that they can do this and that. So while creating content is a key part of the role of a social media manager, it starts with strategy development. So creating comprehensive, comprehensive social media strategies that align with the client's business objectives. And also as a certain, one thing you'll note with strategy is it goes with, with KPIs, with metrics. You set a strategy, we are looking to grow our followers in this country, in this area by by 50% within the next six months. So a KPI for this is the follower count. And a key metric that you can track is the follower count, the growth in follower count in a particular region. So it starts with strategy, then it gets to content. So once you have that strategy, the thing you are looking to, probably a brand has introduced a product in the market. Coca-Cola has introduced a new soda and they want to promote that soda. So the strategy will be to promote our new product. Probably some Fanta, Fanta is where they mostly innovate around, so some Fanta passion, some Fanta pineapple, some Fanta black currant. So we are going to create, to promote our new product in this area, in this demo, with this demographic, with this population. So it starts with strategy, then it gets to content. So when you, you, you have that strategy, you can say, let's now create content around this strategy. So if you're looking to, remember social media, the different type, type of content you can create for social media, you can create images, you can create videos, you can create, you can do live streams, you can do behind the scenes kind of content. So once you have that strategy, you know the type of content to, to create. So another responsibility is audience management, which is very important, which is to foster meaningful interactions with the audience, with the audience through comments and DMs and community, community building. So audience management is a very key part of social media management because the, 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 the ordinary users, people who are looking to buy from a brand, from a brand, when they ask a question, they expect an answer. When they, they ask probably if a product, a certain product is available, if they can make an order, they want someone to respond to that. So it's not just about creating content, it's about engaging the audience and fostering meaningful interaction. Actually, as a social, social media manager, your long-term goal is building a community, building a fan base around your brand. Because in business, we say that the first sale is important, but nothing beats repeat purchase. The first sale is important, but you want people to keep and, to keep buying from your brand over and over again. So once you have a community, people who are supporting your brand, people who are passionate about your brand, the things that you find for, these people will buy for you, they'll keep coming back and, and they'll not just come back, they'll bring other people with, with them, with them also. So they will share your post, they will invite their friends to your brand, they will give positive reviews about your business online. So the, the long-term goal of social media management is to build a community about a brand. So don't just feel that if, if I'm hired as a social media manager, just be to come up with a strategy and create content. Actually, that is, it's not even the most important part. If you can do audience management better, well, then you can say you've excelled as a social media manager. So we've done strategy development, content creation, audience management. And the other responsibility of a social media manager is advertising campaigns. I'm sure you've come across ads on social media, you've come across contents from brands that you're not following, but they appear on your timeline, those are ads. And ads, social media ads, you target them to a particular audience. So as a social media manager, it's your role to understand, to understand the audience, the target audience for the company you're working for. So probably your company is targeting young professionals who are just out of college and probably it's a floating brand, you're targeting the young professionals who are looking for cheap and trendy wear. So once you have an idea of, of the audience you're targeting, you can create ads on social media and reach these people. So when you hire that as a social media manager, that is something that you do, you'll be targeting people who engage with your brand, people who buy from a brand and you create ads, advertising campaigns so that you can reach them. You can reach these people, your target audience in their preferred channels and spaces. So you'll also do, after creating ads, remember ads, you don't just create an ad and leave it, you create an ad and track it because you're paying for it. So you create an ad, then you optimize it, you optimize an ad using metrics, the, the metrics and the insights that you've received from that campaign. So the campaign will tell you that we have, like probably you, you, you did several campaigns. You did several campaigns, probably one for images. You, okay, you, you, you did several campaigns, one, you did a campaign. Okay, so we were on advertising campaign. So after you've created an ad, I hope you can see my screen, so after creating an ad, you need to optimize it using the insights that you've received. So if you created an ad for one with an image and one with a video, you view the analytics, it will probably tell you that the one with the video got more likes, got more shares. Probably you got more business, you got more orders from that campaign with a video. So with that, with those insights, you start creating ads focusing on video. So when you create an ad, you need to track the performance and monitor, you track the performance of the ad and optimize based on those insights. And luckily, the, the, the social media, the advertising platforms, they have come with metrics. So you don't have to worry about a metric, a tracking metric, you'll find it once you create an ad. Another thing you're supposed to do as a social media manager is staying updated with trends. Social media is about trends, social media is about the hot topics. So you are, as a social media manager, you need to be on top of things, you need to see the things that are trending, you need to to, to know what content are people creating right now. Probably there's a challenge that's happening. So how can I jump, how can this brand or this person that I'm, 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 I'm managing the social media platforms for, how can they jump on this trend? Okay, so you don't want trends to pass you, people will forget about you, you need to, to stay updated. What topics are people talking about? Probably an event, there's an event that people are talking about online. So you want your, your, your organization to, to be part of the trend. And so you, as a social media manager, you'll be tracking, this, being on the lookout for trends and making them part of the campaigns that you are doing. Another thing is analytics and reporting. As a social media manager, you'll be tracking the performance of your campaigns, as I mentioned, and using those insights to improve your activities. So now that you know what a social media, a social media manager does, I have a challenge for you. I have a challenge for you. So this is a hard hashtag challenge. A brainstorming challenge. One thing you realize with, with social media management is that when you come up with a campaign, it's tied to, it's anchored to a certain hashtag. Hashtags are very important on social media, they improve content discoverability, they also help you promote your brand because you can have a branded hashtag that's only associated with your brand. So this is a hashtag brainstorming challenge. And let's say you have been hired by Mastercard Foundation to manage their social media accounts. So Mastercard Foundation is looking to, is advocating for equal access to education for underprivileged children. So Mastercard is asking you as the social media manager to come up with a challenge, to come up with, with a campaign, a social media campaign to advocate for equal access to education for underprivileged children. So what hashtags can you use for that? What hashtag can you use for that, that can help one, Mastercard promote its values, promote the work that it's doing? What kind of examples of hashtags that can you come up with? So let's see in the chat, use the chat, let's see who knows social media management here. I'm sure you've all managed equal for all children, Fred is saying equal for all children. Yeah, that's a, it's a good challenge, equal for all children. Education for all, for Ishimwe, Ishimwe, thank you so much, education for all is a nice hashtag. And who else wants to participate in this? In this brainstorming challenge? What hashtag can you come for that? Can you, can you come up with for such a campaign? And see, equal access, Getrude is saying equal access, yeah, that's a nice, that is a nice hashtag, equal access. That's a nice hashtag for a campaign. So thank you so much, those who are participating. Okay, so we have another, we have another, what am I doing? We have another hashtag campaign for you to come up with. So let's say you're hired by Nike to manage, to manage, I get rid of this. You are hired by Nike to create a campaign, let me just stop sharing so that I can share again, not finding a way to. So you're hired by Nike to promote their sustainable and eco-friendly athletic wear. So what hashtag can you come up with? Nike has hired you as a social media manager to promote the sustainable and eco-friendly athletic wear. What hashtag can you come up with? So we are all learning here the not right or wrong answers. In fact, Nike themselves probably haven't done such a campaign, so they can be on the lookout for, they should be on the lookout for the, for the hashtags we'll come up with. So what hashtag can you come up with this? So use the chat to promote Nike eco-friendly and athletic wear. And so there are others, responses up there, none left behind, Benedica, that's an amazing hashtag. Ruth is saying good fit for Nike eco-friendly sport wear. Getrude is saying eco-friendly sport wear, oh yeah, that's nice, eco-friendly, but it's a bit long. It's a bit long. I start to be punchy, Nike wear, Nike wear from Quisera, Quisera Nike wear, yeah, that's good. Nike wear, but ah, this is it, Ekonike, Ekonike is good, goodbye, Ekonike is good, yeah. So Eco Sport Wear from Catherine O'Keefe, yeah. So that is, campaigns on social media are anchored on a hashtag. So if you can come up with a hashtag like this, then you can recommend the type of content to create, probably you can say if you're promoting Nike eco-friendly wear, we can tell them, we can create a video where we're telling the story of how Nike is sourcing for its products, something like that, then you can share that video on different platforms, yeah. So what about this one for UNHCR? So UNHCR lives with refugees, so UNHCR is asking you to create a campaign to showcase how they support and advocate for refugee rights. How, what hashtag can you come up with there? Showcase how you and HCR, you and HCR support and advocate for refugee rights. You can say refugees' lives matter, you can, you can say something like stand for refugees, Quisera, yeah, that's good, stand for refugees. Quisera can be such a good social media manager, you're good on strategy and and hashtags. Okay, another one, stand for refugees, I've not seen another one on UNHCR. Their lives matter, it's true, yeah, their lives matter, but after this you need to explain, yeah, but yeah, sometimes you 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 give a campaign like this so that people can click and see their lives matter, they want to know whose lives matter. Eh, and another one that I believe you can come up with is eh, welcome a stranger. You know refugees are about, about eh, they're not natives where they are. So you can come up with a challenge like welcome a stranger, so welcome them to your home, welcome them to your country. So this can be something that eh, UNHCR can pick up. So thank you so much for that participation, it means that here we have social media managers. Remember, social media managers, it's, you can even do, you can use these skills to, probably you're going, you're going to start an organization. You're going to start an NGO to do something. So, so you can eh, use these skills to create campaigns for your own, for your own organization that you'll start, because social media is is big, is how people grow, is how people grow their organizations. So eh, this is, even if you you're not going to apply for a job as a social media manager, you're going to learn how to manage your own social media page, you choose to start eh, that eh, a page or a business for that matter. So let's continue. Okay, so who can become a social media manager? Who can become a remote social media manager? As we, as we've seen eh, eh, we have social media managers within us, people who have attended this webinar. We have social media managers here, so anyone with the right skills, knowledge and experience can be a remote social media manager. Okay, anyone with the right skills, anyone with the right knowledge and experience can become a social media manager. So let's go over the the skills that you need to excel as a social media manager. So one of the skills that you need is creativity. As you've seen here, we are coming up with challenges, it takes a lot of creativity to find a a hashtag, to find hmm, to find that hashtag and and build eh a campaign around that, build a messaging, create messaging around, around the hashtag that you brought. So you need a lot of creativity to succeed as a social media manager. You need to understand that, especially if you're doing it for a business. If you're managing the social media accounts for a business, they're in competition. Eh, they want eh more followers, they want people to follow them eh, buy their products eh, share their their posts and everything. So you need to be creative to come up with great content, great ideas that will help you are, you are, the companies you're working for stand out, stand out in the social media space. Another thing is copyrighting, copyrighting is very important for a social media manager, why? Because you'll be, you'll be eh communicating the idea that you've come up with eh through eh creative written words, creative written eh messages. So eh, once you've come up with that idea, you need to execute that idea. Eh, you need to tell people what that idea is about, so you need a lot of eh, you'll you'll do a lot of writing as a social media manager. So copyrighting is one of the skills that you need. Why do you need these skills? To create powerful content that resonates with the audience and seems to the client's brand messaging. The other skill that you need as a social media manager is how to handle brand interactions, how to handle brand interactions. Eh, you need to be courteous when you're dealing with people on social media. Remember, this can be your customers, so you need to handle them well, you need to be respectful, you need to, even if someone has spoken negatively about eh, about your organization, the organization you're working for, you still need to maintain that professionalism, you need to maintain that courteous spirit and eh respond to them eh, in a manner that doesn't harm your organization's bottom line. So eh, from DMs and reviews and comments, a social media manager needs to handle requests with finesse. You need to handle, sometimes people are out to make eh, to to embarrass you on social media. People are looking to eh, do a manner of things to eh, probably a competitor has been hired to eh, someone has been hired to eh, talk eh negatively about your organization, you still need to maintain eh, the professionalism and deal with every eh, every issue with finesse. Eh, another skill that you need is how to stay updated with trends, how to follow eh, the things that people are interested about, so that you can use that information to create engaging campaigns and content for, for the brand that you're working for. The other skill that you need as a social media manager is communication skills. You need communication skills to communicate effectively with clients eh, and the target target audience. So when someone reaches out to your brand that you're working for eh, online, even if you're not in the mood to talk, you still need to make sure you show up because the organization you're working for could miss, could lose clients just because of a, of 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 a wrong, something that was not answered effectively. So communication skills is important, you need to learn how to communicate effectively without damaging, so as not to damage the reputation of the brand that you are working for. The other skill you need is analytical thinking, analytical thinking will help you in analyzing metrics and gaining insight from them. Eh, as a social media manager, you should always be looking to improve on the the campaigns that you run, so you have a campaign to do something today. And you need to, as you're, as you're managing campaigns, you need to study the analytics so that you can know what is working and what is not. Then optimize on what is working and and let go of what is not. So analytical thinking is very important for a social media manager. Now that you know eh, the skills you need as a social media manager, eh, let's just go over them briefly because it's very important. First of all, you need creativity, you need copyrighting, eh, you you need eh, you need to learn how to handle brand interactions, how to stay updated with trends. And also you need communication skills and analytical thinking skills. So now let's go over the tools that you need as a social media manager. One, as we said, you'll do a lot of content creation, you need to find the tools you need to create content. One of them is Canva, Canva is for editing your videos, your images. You also need Canva for eh, adding logos to your content so that someone cannot steal it and use it as their own. So Canva luckily is free, eh, but if you need more, you need more things, you, more features, you can pay for the paid version. I also need Inshot, you need CapCut, you need Picturechat, Clipchamp, all these are eh, tools you'll need for for managing, for for content design. Okay, so you also need eh, something called social media scheduling tool. Eh, why is it important? Because content creation takes a lot of work, it's not difficult. I work in the content space, I create content for brands and it takes so much time. So what you do is you create content in advance, so you say, I'm going to commit this week to create content for the whole month. So you create that content, you create your posts, you create your videos, you, then you schedule them to be published on social media at specific times. So you need these tools eh, LinkedIn allows you to schedule posts for later, but I don't think eh, Facebook, Twitter does that. So you will need eh, an external tool to do that. So one of them is Buffer, one of them is Hootsuite and Later. These are tools you can use to schedule posts. Eh, so once you're hired as a social media manager, you'll use eh, those tools. You also need analytical and reporting tools, as I said earlier, most of the social media platforms come with, they come with eh, reporting tools built in within them. So Facebook has Facebook Insights, Twitter has Twitter Analytics, Instagram has Instagram Insights. So this will give you eh, will help you eh, learn how your content is performing, you know how many people have viewed your content, you know how many people saw your content, how many people liked, shared and 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 such kind of stuff. Then that information, you can use it to, to improve your campaign. The other tools that you need, you need social media listening and monitoring tools, these are very important. Why is it important to 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 work with such tools? Social media monitoring and listening and monitoring tools, basically you, you you tell this tool eh, this brand is called so and so. I I want you to eh, listen, when someone mentions, when someone mentions this brand, this mentions this name, I want you to notify me so that I can respond immediately. Sometimes people talk about your brand online without tagging you, so you'll not, you will not get that notification. Sometimes people use your hashtags and you don't even know about that. So with this social media listening tool, you can give them the words that you want them to monitor for you. And once you are mentioned, once you, people are talking about you, you get those insights right away. So these are the tools you need, you need tools for content design, for scheduling content, for analytics and reporting, and also for social media listening, listening and monitoring. Eh, the other tools that you need for your work as a social media manager, you also need the tools for graphics and icons, eh, graphics, images and icons. Remember eh, sometimes eh, creating content is expensive, you may not, if you're going to take a picture of a model, you you need to hire that model eh, hire a videographer, hire a eh eh, someone to take the photos, sometimes you don't have those resources. But there are models, you can get the pictures online and they are free to use. So you need a site eh, and tools where you can get that content, like pixels and 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 splash, you can find free to use images, you can even, you can pay for, if you want hmm, specific images eh, and graphics. You can, you can pay for that, but there are lots of free content, free images that you can find, that you can use for your social media, for creating, for the content that you create. So eh, Pixabay is another one, then Flat Icon, Flat Icon will give you icons to use in your content. So these are the tools you need to to, for graphic image, for graphic images and icons. The other tools you need are tools for hashtag research, you need to understand, you need to find out which hashtags are eh, are trending or which which hashtags, which hashtags appeal eh, to the audience that I'm 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 targeting, which hashtags are suitable for certain campaigns. So we did that hashtag brainstorming eh, challenge. So sometimes you just don't have the creativity, or you're too tired, or you're too beat, or you're experiencing writer's block. So in that case, to find appropriate hashtags, you can use specific tools. And the next type of tools you need are tools for social media advertising. Social media advertising tools, they're based in within the platforms you are, you are on. So if it's Facebook, there's Facebook Ads, if there's Twitter, there's Twitter Advertising, IG has its own advertising platform. So you just need to create an account, a business account, and you'll be able to advertise on those platforms. The other tools that you need are tools for shortening your URL eh, for tracking the performance of those URLs. So let's say you are telling people, click on this link, click on this link to to register for this event, click on this link to eh, to order your product, click on this link eh, to find out more about our business. So you add, you don't want to add the entire link, the entire URL, so you use eh, a tool that shortens your links. It's called eh, URL shortening eh, tool. Eh, this includes eh, Bitly and Tiny URL. So Bit, Bitly and Tiny, Tiny URL. So the other important thing is that these tools will also help you track the performance of your links. So it will tell you how many people have clicked on that link, it will tell you where they're coming from. And this is, information is very important because it will help you, it will help you improve. It will help you with the targeting, it will help you improve your campaign. So if you, you find that that you're getting clicks from eh, from from the US, you can say, in the next campaigns, I'm going to target users in the US, so I'll use ads and I'll target people in the US. Because with ads, you can say, show this ad to people in this and this country, to people and, to people in this and this area, to people who are of this demographic, who are of this age. So tracking is, these tools come with the ability to track. So how do you find a job as a social media manager? How do you find a job as a social media manager? This is very important, so you're asking me, how do I get these jobs? One of the things you'll, you'll realize is that, as I've said, eh, everyone is looking right now too. Everyone is now, I'm sure your parents are also, are all on social media, people you didn't even think was on social media, you are finding them on TikTok, they're creating very funny videos, so everyone is now moving to social media. So it means that eh, there's, there's a demand for this job. So even looking within eh, your networks, looking within your communities, you'll find eh, there's someone who needs eh, someone to manage their accounts, probably someone is starting eh, a a business, a startup, so they're managing their accounts by themselves, themselves. But as the business grows, they find that they can no longer manage to keep track of their accounts. So they need someone to manage that for them. So first place you need to look is within your network, who has started a business and they need someone eh, who is, who is competent, who is hardworking, who is punctual to manage their, their, their social media pages, their business and personal. So one of the things you need to do to find a job is to build a portfolio. So you need to create a profile on freelancing platforms and job boards so that you can advertise your services and skills as a social media manager. So eh, I've given you, eh, we've done that, we've done the challenge, that hashtag brainstorming challenge. So a- at the end of this video, I I have another takeaway assignment. So those who are truly interested in eh, building eh, a career as a social media manager, I'd invite you to take that assignment, it's, it's about brainstorming, brainstorming eh, hashtag ideas for different organizations, different campaigns. So that is something that you can share on your, or as a portfolio that eh, I've done eh, a brainstorming challenge on hashtags and this is the hashtag I came up with. So you need to build a portfolio eh, create a profile and advertise your eh, advertise your services. So you can showcase your skills, you can say I'm creative, you can use the challenge that you've done as as reference. You can say, I understand copyrighting, I'm good, I'm a good copywriter, so I can write captivating captions for the post I create. Then you can give evidence of the post you eh, your copyrighting skills and 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 such things. So the freelancing platforms and job boards, we talked about this in our previous sessions, but just to go over them. Eh, there's Upwork, there's Freelancer, there's Fiverr, there's, you can create eh, profiles on those platforms looking for people who want eh, people to manage their social media accounts. The other thing you need to do is to The other thing you need to do is to promote your services. So don't just sit down there with your skills that you've acquired. So as I said, your network is the first place eh where you need to promote your services. So you probably, eh as a young person, you know more about social media than the elder generation. So if someone is in your community, is eh I, has a business. And you don't really see them promoting their business on social media, you can say, I can create an app for you. And I can be promoting your business for you so that you can find and connect with people online. So start within your network, look for people who are running businesses and tell them, do you know that they are customers online? Do you know that the people you're targeting are actually on social media, spending most of the time there? So start within your network and eh look for people who might need your services. Also join social media groups and forums that are talking about eh about eh. Related to your niche. So find eh pages on Facebook eh and groups. Eh they mostly post about this job, so and as you connect to data members in those groups, even LinkedIn groups. Eh and if an opportunity arrives, it will be posted there and you can, you can eh apply for those jobs. Also, I mentioned here, attending industry events and conferences, this is your normal networking. You can attend eh an event and see people, they're struggling to really grow their profiles. Eh their accounts on social media, you can tell them, I can help you do that for you. So there's that, and the other thing you need to do to develop additional skills. Remember. As I said, you're not just creating content, you're doing strategy, you're doing copywriting, you're doing eh ads, you're creating ads. So ads eh you can even take a, a course on Facebook ads, because Facebook ads is very popular right now. So if you can tell your client that I can do great ads for you, it, it will help you learn a role. As a social media manager. So develop your skills, network and eh your job and, and create a profile on freelancing platforms. So eh that is our session today, on how to become a social media manager, how to become a great social media manager. Eh anyone with a question on what we've covered today? Eh I can see no one is. Okay, how can I succeed as a social media manager with few followers? Eh Kuthbat is asking how to succeed as a social media manager with two, with few followers. Eh to succeed on social media manager, you just need to create content that, that can go viral. So if you can create viral content, that will help you grow your followers. Remember, no one was born with a million followers, they started with one, two or three. So it's about creating content, it's about creating content, publishing content and eh sharing it. Eh and, and not giving up when you see your numbers are not growing. So to succeed with few followers, first of all, you need to perfect your content creation skill. Look for trending content, look for captivating ideas, eh think out of the box. And this will help you. Grow your account. Another thing you need to do, eh this one has crossed my mind, is. Eh jump on trends. So what is trending right now? If eh a particular topic is trending, try to create content around that and create eh something unique, okay? So if you can jump on trends, if you can eh identify the things that are trending and create content around that, that can help you. Eh succeed and increase your follower count. I hope that answers your question, Kuthbat. Let me see another question here. Eh Jacolo is asking, how do we maximize value when boosting content? Maximize value when boosting, boosting content, I, I'm imagining you're talking about eh post eh ad. Ads, social media ads. If that is the case, eh to maximize value is, you maximize value by enhancing your targeting. Enhancing your targeting. Remember, you have created content and the value of this content is the audience that it brings, the people it reaches. So you are creating content for a younger generation, why are you bringing things that don't appeal to them? So if you're creating eh you want to maximize value, you need to do impressive targeting, you need to target eh effectively. To do this targeting so well, first that the person who sees, the person you're targeting, when they see your content, they can say that this, this content is made for me. This content appeals for me. I'm sure you've seen ads and you say that this ad, the one who created this ad didn't know what they were doing. So to maximize value, you need to do impressive targeting. So this is why you need to really study the brand that you're working for, you really need to eh take time to understand what they are up to. What they are looking to achieve and the people they're trying to connect with. And when boosting your content, make sure that, that eh the demographic is, is captured clickingly. Because eh these platforms that do, the platforms that do, that, the advertising platforms, they are very good at targeting. So you can tell them, I want people between the ages of eighteen to twenty-four, who are living in Arizona, this and this place. And they will ensure your content gets to those particular people. So eh thank you for your question. Hmm, Jack, and actually, there is, we have a quiz. We have a quiz for you, and I forgot to mention this at the start of the, of the event. Is that eh we have eh an opportunity to receive mentorship on, with me, on how to succeed as a social media, to succeed as a remote worker. So the quiz is coming right now and we'll use your performance in the quiz to guess who gets this opportunity. So the quiz is based on what we have covered, so it's not difficult. So I'm going to launch the quiz right now and we'll have the quiz in English and we'll have the quiz in French. So if you're comfortable in English, please take the quiz in English. If you're comfortable in French, take the quiz in French. So let me launch the English quiz. And it should have popped on your screen. It should have popped on your screen. So we have seven questions and we'll use the performance, your performance in this quiz. To gauge who gets the opportunity to receive mentorship on remote work. So eh you can take the quiz, you can take the quiz right now, it has popped on your screen. If it has not popped on your screen, click on poll slash quizzes, poll slash quizzes. And take the quiz from there. Take it in English. You also have the quiz in French, so. Eh I've not seen anyone eh taking it, so it's not a difficult quiz actually. Information that we've covered today, so if you are tentative, you should get seven out of seven. So the quiz will run for five minutes, we are one minute down, so get started, get to the quiz. We'll also be sharing the answers to the quiz eh once we are done, so be on the lookout to know how you performed. I will be discussing the quiz afterward, so please take the quiz. If you need it in French, please wait for a moment and until we will launch the French quiz. So I hope you've seen the quiz, if you've not seen the quiz, if you've not accessed the quiz, please let me know. And I will show you how to go about that. Yeah, I can see some people are taking the quiz, thank you so much for that. If you are having any challenges accessing the quiz, let me know in the chat and I will help you. I will help you. Remember, this is the opportunity to get one-on-one mentorship on how to succeed as a social media manager. Mapucci saying done with the quiz, Mapucci, thank you so much for that. I will be sharing, I'll be discussing the quiz in a few minutes, let us just give everyone time. To take the quiz, so if you need more time, eh you still have time to do the quiz. And it's running right now for three minutes and you'll have two more minutes to do the quiz. Let's see, twelve for you have taken the quiz, and thank you so much for those who have taken the time to do that. Yes. And we have like a minute to go for the English quiz to be over, eh but if you need more time, just let me know in the chat and. And I will share that with you. Okay, so we will share, yeah, we'll reveal the answers after the, after everyone has taken the quiz. Marcos is asking if there's a reward for the quiz, the reward of the quiz is that it gives you eh, it gives an opportunity to be considered. For the one-on-one ment- mentorship, so eh that is the reward for the quiz. Eh you do this quiz, we'll have other quizzes coming up, so we will tell you the results. We will tell you the results and, and we will, the one who performs the best gets the opportunity to receive one-on-one mentorship. On how to succeed as a remote worker. Here I can see our time is almost coming up, so after five minutes, I will switch over to French. I can see fifteen of you have done the, 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 the quiz, thank you so much. So I believe I can move over to French. I can launch the French quiz. So the French quiz, I've launched the French quiz, if you need to take the quiz in French, please, this is your time. And please take the quiz in French and we will. Review the results after a few moments. It seems where you cannot go off the call right now, we still have eh, there's, as I said, I have a challenge that I'll be sharing. That with everyone in the chat, for those who truly want to master social media management. I have a small takeaway assignment for, for you and I will review your, your, how you perform. How you, I'll review the answers you give and I will give you feedback for, for after that. So a moment please, so that once we are done with this, but let me. Let me stop. Eh let me share the. I, I can see no one has taken. Eh no one has taken the French quiz so far, so it's safe to imagine that no one needs the French quiz. Eh so far, no one has taken the. Has taken the French quiz, so I can, I can, since we've given you. Eh two minutes and no one has taken the quiz, I can assume no one is taking the French quiz, so I went, I'll end the poll and discuss. And discuss the quiz with you. So. Eh let me go over the results, so the first question was, why is social media management considered a high demand skill? The answer is eh businesses and individuals recognize the impact on growth. Right now, everything is happening on social media, so the correct answer for that was C, no, is it C or B? Businesses and individuals recognize the impact on, on growth. The other question was, the primary responsibility, primary responsibility of a social media manager is content creation and duration. I can see there are some who store customer service, but the primary one is mostly around creating content. So why, the question three, why is understanding analytics crucial for a social media manager? It's important because it will help you track campaign performance. I've told you several times about the importance of campaign performance, tracking campaign for performance. It helps you learn how to improve your campaign. So the correct answer is to track campaign performance, there are some who say to create engaging content, but the true. Eh correct answer is to track campaign per- performance. Eh question four, what does the term social listening refer to? It means monitoring your men- brand mentions and industry trends. Yeah, that is what social listening is all about, the correct answer. And which is the most important, important skill for a social media manager? The correct answer is all the above, eh we talked about creativity, copywriting and managing brand interactions. So all of these are important in no equal measure, so the answer is all the above. So how do you define, how do you find your job, how do you find a job as a social media manager? Is by building a portfolio eh, building a portfolio. Building a portfolio and promoting your services online and in your network. The last question is, which tool is used for scheduling posts? The, which tool is commonly used, so I shared about the tool for scheduling and the answer is buffer. Buffer is the one that is used for scheduling posts, so that is the quiz. Eh most of you did well, I can see there are some questions where everyone got everything right, but some questions are tricky. Like this question seven, it had several answers. So thank you for that, so let me, so if you are, if you are looking in your charts. If you look over in the chart, you will see we posted, we posted the link for this. We've posted the link for the survey, so please, please fill that survey. The link is in the chat, everyone who has attended this session would like to hear your feedback. Because we use that feedback to improve this session. Also, let me, let me share this. Let me share. This form, this Google Doc, so here I've created a, a hashtag brainstorming challenge with more scenarios. So. So please, if you are truly, you want to excel as a social media manager, there are few challenges for you. So eh use the link that I've shared, I hope you can see it is a Google Doc link. In that link, there are several challenges and, and I'd like you to attempt them. To come up with hashtags for different campaigns for different organizations, because as I said, social media eh management campaigns are anchored on, on a hashtag. So do that, do that eh a small assignment and eh I've, I've given my email. In that, I've given my email in that eh document. So what I want you to do is to download this, let me just see on my screen so that I can show you how to do it. I want you to download this eh document as a, as a, as a, as a Google Doc. So just go over to file, once you open the, the file, go over to file and say download, then download that. Eh as a Microsoft Word, so download it as a Microsoft Word document, then fill it offline. I did want to give people editing access here because eh I realize people are interfering and changing things. So eh fill it and my email is at the bottom, eh so this is something I will do on, on my own, on the side. So eh eh at your, at your own time, just fill those challenges and send it over to me, this is my. This is my email and I will review each and every submission is sent over and I will give individual feedback. Just to help you uh develop your skills in this area. So download it, use it and send it over to me when everything is. Uh is ready, so also, I want to thank everyone who has made it to be here, this is our session today. I really hope you enjoyed it and be on the lookout for session two in three weeks' time. We'll cover an amazing session on content writing and SEO. This is how I make money, this is how I sustain myself through content writing and SEO, and I want to share that skill with you. So thank you so much for being here today, thank you for making time, and I'm honored you guys joined today. So when you find time, I hope you fill the survey, the link is in the chat. Fill that survey and let us hear what you want to say, so thank you so much. And if you have taken the document, if you've taken the link for the survey, you are free to go, thank you everyone.